Item 6B, receive update on planning study for the South Linden Avenue and Scott Street Caltrain grade separation project and provide direction on Scott Street closure.
Everybody's being polite. I was gonna say, you're certainly welcome to go if you'd like.
Thanks for being here.
Unless you really like trains. It's gonna be talking about trains.
Thank you for being courteous.
Thank you. See you, buddy.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay, thank you for pausing for a moment. Yes, staff?
Hi, Honorable Mayor and Council. Tonight, we have an update on the Caltrans grade separation project. No formal action is requested from council tonight, but it is a significant project that is in the planning stages in our community, so staff wanted to provide counsel with a full presentation on where the project is to date and talk about some of the key decisions that are gonna need to be made over the next few months. And so, we have Jimmy Tan, the city's Public Works Director, and Mike O'Kato, an Associate Civil Engineer with our Public Works Department, to give you that presentation tonight.
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, good evening. My name is Mike Cato, engineer from the Department of Public Works. I'm here tonight to give you an update on the planning study for the South Linden Avenue and Scott Street Caltrain grade separation project. Tonight, I'm going to give you a brief background on the project and talk a little bit about the planning, the project development team that is working on the planning study. Also, give you an update on what the team has done so far, and then we'll be available to answer any questions you may have at the end. There are other members from the project development team here tonight to help answer the question, answer questions you may have at the end. I'll introduce them to you when we get to the end of the presentation. So, I'd like to start just by talking about some of the terms that are important that we understand as we talk about this project. And the first is what an at-grade crossing is. So currently, Scott Street is an at-grade crossing. What that means is the road and the train tracks are at the same elevation, and so when a train approaches the crossing, the gates come down and cars on the road have to stop and wait for the train to pass. A grade-separated crossing is when the road and the train tracks are at different elevations. So, as you can see on that slide, for example, that lower image has the trains passing over the cars. San Bruno Avenue here in the city of San Bruno is an example of a grade-separated crossing. So, the benefits of a grade separation. The main benefits, of course, derive from the fact that the trains and the cars no longer have to cross each other at the same elevation. This means roadway traffic is no longer delayed by passing trains. It also means that we can get safety improvements because the train traffic and the roadway traffic are separated from each other physically. Another benefit is that grade-separated crossings tend to make it easier to establish a quiet zone. A quiet zone is an area where the trains don't have to sound their horns when they pass. Train traffic is expected to increase up and down the Peninsula Corridor. Caltrain has plans to increase their service from 92 trains per day to 114 per day by the year 2022, and on top of that, in the future, we are expecting High-Speed Rail to also be sharing that rail corridor. So, as the train traffic increases, we would expect that all the benefits that we can gain from a grade separation, you know, would have more value. So, grade separations are typically considered a benefit for the roadway traffic, more so than they are considered a benefit for the trains. For this reason, grade separation projects are typically initiated by the local agencies and not by Caltrain. So, in September of 2013, the city of San Bruno and the city of South San Francisco joined together to initiate this particular grade separation project. They jointly submitted a grant application to the San Mateo County Transportation Authority to acquire the funds to complete the planning study that we're working on right now. At that time, it's also important to note that San Bruno, in the application, stated that we are interested in having a grade separation at Scott Street, but we also wanted to make sure that this crossing remained open to vehicles. So, on April 20th of 2016, San Bruno entered an agreement with the San Mateo County Transportation Authority and the city of South San Francisco and the Peninsula Corridor Joint Powers Board, also known as JPB. JPB is the governing board for Caltrain. The agreement was to complete the planning study to evaluate options for creating grade- separated crossings at South Linden Avenue in South San Francisco and at Scott Street in San Bruno. The project development team to complete that study was formed in January of 2018. Staff from Public Works has been representing the city on that team, and the other members of the team include staff from the city of South San Francisco, some people from Caltrain, and also some consultants who were hired by JPB. Apex Strategies is one of the consultants, and they are helping with the public outreach, and AECOM is helping with the technical expertise. The planning study is funded by the San Mateo, by San Mateo County through a Measure A grant, and no funding has been secured for any work beyond the completion of the planning study at this time. The project timeline is something like this. The preliminary design and alternatives, which is what we're working on now, essentially the planning study, is supposed to take two years upon receipt of the funding. After that, we would move to environmental documentation. That's expected to take three years after the completion of the preliminary design work, and then would come right away in design work. Those can run concurrently and are expected to last about three years after completion of the environmental documents. And then, once funding is acquired for the construction, the construction is expected to last five years. This is an aerial photo of the Scott Street crossing. It is oriented a little oddly. North is to the left. There is a reason for that, which I will explain to you shortly, but north is to the left on this, on this map. Scott Street is a road highlighted in yellow. The train tracks are what's highlighted in green. So, Scott Street is roughly oriented east-west, and it passes through the 5th Edition Neighborhood, which is that area down there at the bottom of the map, and it also connects to San Mateo Avenue east of the tracks. That's it up there, that San Mateo Avenue. This is a ground view photo of Scott Street, of Scott Street Crossing. This is looking across the crossing from east to west, so that's what it looks like today. And so, this is another map of the project. This shows the complete extents of the project, and this map is also oriented with north to the left. That's why I did the other one the same way, so we don't get lost between the two. The magenta line on this map, that kind of zig, zigs through the map, that thing right there, that's the city limits between the city of South San Francisco and the city of San Bruno. South San Francisco's to the left of that line, San Bruno's to the right. The two crossings that we're talking about are the two gray boxes. Scott Street is the one that's towards the right edge. South Linden is the one that's towards the middle. There, and there. Those two crossings are about 1,850 feet apart. There are various geometric constraints affecting the design of the project that we've indicated on the map. Those are, there is a rail crossover section between the two crossings. A rail crossover section is where the train can move between the northbound and the southbound tracks. There are some rules about what the tracks can do physically during the crossover, so those do apply some constraints to the design of the grade separation. And then, obviously, the, whatever the project does, we need to tie into the existing tracks at some point on either side of the project, and there are some constraints about how we do that. Over to the left of this, you can see the blue line that's labeled with Colma Creek. And towards the right edge, it's not really labeled, but there is a, the San Bruno Caltrain Station is right at the right edge of the map. Those are two existing structures that we don't want to have to rebuild any part of it, so we need to tie into those existing, into those existing structures. That limits how far, you know, the tracks going up and down can go. And then, there's another constraint, which is I-380. That thing. And I-380, obviously, the tracks go under it right now, and there's a certain vertical clearance we have to keep, so that also puts some constraints on what the tracks can do as we try to do the grade separation project. When you put all of those constraints together, along with the proximity of the two crossings, the designs of the two start to affect each other, and so it just makes sense for this to sort of be looked at together, and hence, the joint project that we've entered into with South San Francisco. So, I'm gonna start talking about what the team has actually been working on. Initially, there were six alternatives that were proposed, but two of them were eliminated fairly early on, so they're not shown on this slide. The two that were eliminated are options where the roadway would stay at its current elevation, and the tracks would go either over or under the roadways. Those two options are not physically possible, given the constraints that we were talking about on the previous slide. So, they've been thrown out. That leaves us with four remaining alternatives for the team to look at. Those alternatives are, alternative one, what we're calling a hybrid, track raise and roadway lower. This would be where the track goes up a little bit, and the road goes down a little bit, and between the two moving, we get the clearance required. Alternative two is also a hybrid, but it's where the road goes up and the train goes down a little bit. Alternative three is where the train will actually remain at its current elevation, and the road goes under it. And alternative four is where the train would remain at its current elevation, and the road will go over it. So, as we're looking at these alternatives, one of the things that came out had to do with what happens when the road starts to move up and down. So, at the top of this slide, you can imagine that's an at-grade crossing, where the road, the train, the properties are all at relatively the same elevation. Those yellow trapezoids are the driveways, and it all works out nicely when it's all at the same elevation. At the bottom, we start talking about lowering the road. In this particular example, the gray line is the road. You can see that further away from the crossing, that house on the left, the driveway connection doesn't change all that much. It's probably possible to modify the driveway and maintain a property connection to the road. But for the house on the right, you can see how the roadway starts to drop pretty significantly below the level of the property, and when that happens, it may not be possible to maintain the driveway connections. And so, this became, obviously, a concern for the team as we were talking about grade separations at Scott. So, this is a map that shows what one of the alternatives might look like if we did a grade separation at Scott Street and kept it open to cars. This is for alternative one, which is the hybrid where the tracks go up and the road goes down. Those purple highlighted areas are the roadways, and... That's Scott Street. The tracks are in green, running up and down the middle. The purple highlighted areas of the road are the areas that would, where the road would have to start moving up or down, in this case, down, and the blue shaded properties are properties that would likely be affected by that movement of the roadway. In this particular case, we think this, this would likely be the best scenario in terms of the least amount of properties impacted. We think it's gonna be on the order of 37 properties affected, with about 26 of those being residential properties in the 5th Edition Neighborhood. The worst-case scenario doesn't look a whole lot worse than this. The number of properties affected climbs up maybe to about 42, and the residential properties in the 5th Edition goes up by maybe one to 27, but it, the extents of the effects do get further out. This is a similar map, just to show you what happens at South Linden. Again, this is for the same alternative, and this also turns out to probably be the best alternative for South Linden as well, in terms of leading to the least amount of impacts. The properties around South Linden are, they're all commercial, so they don't have to deal with resident, impacts to residential properties at that location. So, while we were talking about these property impacts, we also had to start then thinking about, well, are there other ways that we could deal with Scott Street? And so, there are three options that we can, talked about with relation to Scott Street, and that is that Scott Street could be grade-separated and remain open to vehicles, and that's the map that I just showed you, so we're talking about having some property impacts as the road moves up or down. Another possibility could be that Scott Street would be grade-separated but closed to vehicles, but we could provide a pedestrian bicycle crossing instead of, well, we could provide a pedestrian bicycle crossing. And then, the third option is also the possibility that Scott Street could just remain an at-grade crossing. In other words, we don't have a grade separation there. So, I'm gonna talk a little bit about each of those possibilities. So, if we do a grade separation at Scott Street and it remains open to vehicles, the main pro for this, of course, is that we gain those benefits of having a grade separation, which would be less disruption to traffic, possibly improve safety, maybe a better chance to get a quiet zone. Of course, the cons are what we were just talking about, which is we might have some impacts to the properties nearby the crossing. The second option, where we grade-separate Scott but close it to vehicles, the pros for this are we can gain benefits of grade separation for the pedestrians and the bicyclists, and the properties near the crossing would not be affected by changes to the roadway. The con to this is we lose our vehicle connection across the crossing. Last one is where Scott Street would remain an at-grade crossing. In this case, the pros are that, obviously, the crossing remains open to vehicles, and we don't have property impacts around the crossing. The cons are, we haven't done a grade separation, so we get none of those benefits that would be associated with that. I would note that while we lose those, the benefits of the grade separation, there is the possibility that we could possibly gain some of the safety, some safety enhancements, and maybe a chance at a quiet zone if we were to improve the gate system at the crossing. We'll talk a little bit more about that later. So, just expounding a little bit more on the possibility of Scott remaining an at-grade crossing. So, in the original application, one of the things that was pointed out, from August of 5th, August 5th of 2003 to August 5th of 2013, there were six collisions at this crossing that involved trains and vehicles, or trains and pedestrians. Oddly enough, since then, well, at least since 2014, 2015, 2016, there were no additional collisions at that crossing. So, but those first 10 years that were part of the application indicate, you know, there may be some advantage to enhancing safety at this crossing. Again, it may be possible to improve the gate system instead of doing a grade separation, but grade separations do provide the highest level of safety and would also give us a better chance at getting a quiet zone. And another thing to keep in mind is that we are expecting increased train traffic, and so, all of the things that happen, the potential conflicts, you know, between roadway traffic and trains, will only get worse. Few more things to consider, increase, that increased train traffic will also mean more disruptions to the roadway traffic, and as we are working on this now, you know, we have an opportunity to be part of a joint project with the city of South San Francisco. You know, if we were to decide at this time to simply keep it as an at-grade crossing, we could lose some of the benefits of that. It could become harder for us to find funding. It could limit our ability, well, it could limit our design choices, should we go through with this in the future. And it's also true that whatever choices we make, you know, also will affect what South San Francisco does at their crossing at South Linden Avenue. And also, if, you know, we separate the two projects, cumulatively, that could make things worse in terms of construction costs and construction impacts. You know, building it separately would mean two different construction projects there. That could potentially mean, you know, when you build these things, you gotta do a shoe fly, which is essentially the temporary track that goes past. Might have to do that twice if we do it separately. So, just some things to think about in terms of how we make our decision regarding what happens at Scott Street. So, let's circle back a little bit again to the four alternatives. This is what the team is really focusing on. As the team went through its work, we focused on version, we tried to focus on alternatives that would not lead us into the property impacts. So, we talked about the same four alternatives, but in terms of closing Scott Street and having a pedestrian and bicycle crossing at that location, and that, that's what we were talking about when we went to the communities. But, so let's just quickly go through that. Alternative one, at South Linden on the top, would have the trains going up a little, the road going down, and at Scott Street, which is the bottom half of this slide, no cars would go through, and we would have a pedestrian and bicycle underpass. Alternative two is a hybrid where the road goes up and the track goes down, so at South Linden, that's what happens. At Scott Street, we would close it to vehicles, and we could actually have either a pedestrian-bike overpass or an underpass. This particular slide is showing it with an overpass. Alternative three would be where the train stays at grade and the road goes down, so at South Linden, that's what happens, and at Scott, again, we're closing to vehicle traffic, and we could have either a pedestrian and bike overpass or underpass. And the last option, where the track remains at grade and the train goes over it at South Linden, and at Scott Street, no cars, and either a pedestrian or bicycle overpass or These are just some photos, examples of pedestrian underpasses. From the top left and working clockwise, that is Amsterdam Central Station Tunnel, a tunnel on Park Avenue, on Park Avenue in Lombardo, Illinois. Lower right is F Street in San Carlos, and that lower left is Euclid Avenue right here in San Bruno. Some photos of pedestrian overpasses. The top left and working clockwise again, that's Arroyo Avenue, Permanente Creek in Mountain View, University Avenue and I-80 in Berkeley, Stevens Creek Trail in Mountain View, and Ringwood Avenue in Menlo Park. So, I've been covering the technical part of what the team's been doing. There's also a community engagement component to what the team has been working on. This is just a graphic that illustrates the schedule for the community engagement plan. Include several community meetings, as well as several city council briefings. This is perhaps a little bit easier way to understand the schedule. On August 16th, we had the first community meeting. October 9th, tonight, San Bruno is giving our first city council briefing. We have another community meeting planned for late November or early December of 2018 that is still to be determined as far as the date. And then, in January of 2019, we will come back to provide another briefing for council. It's thought that that could possibly take the form of a study session for council to really get into the technical details as much as you'd like. And then, in April of 2019, we're expecting to have our third community meeting, and it's at that meeting that we want to really focus on selecting a preferred alternative for the project. And then, in May of 2019, the two cities would be going back to our respective councils to seek approval for the preferred alternative. So, just a little bit of information about what happened at the first community meeting. It was held, as I said, on August 16th. It was held at the South San Francisco Conference Center. There were four San Bruno residents in attendance. There was a presentation given about the project. The four alternatives were discussed, and at that meeting, in all cases, we were mostly talking about Scott Street being closed to vehicles. There was a question-and-answer period, and we were able to solicit and receive feedback from several of the residents who were there. And the feedback from the residents, at least as it pertained to Scott Street, mostly, the residents did not seem overly concerned about the idea that Scott Street might close to vehicles. Their, their biggest interest was actually in that whatever we build, that it be safe and clean, and there was one resident who preferred lowering the tracks as opposed to raising it. He felt that this would have less visual and noise impacts than an elevated track. And so, overall, we walked away from that meeting, you know, with the idea that the residents had a preference for a pedestrian and bicycle overpass at Scott Street. So, that kind of wraps up the update of what the team has been doing up to this date. So, thank you for your attention. As Jovan mentioned, we don't really have, you know, there's no action required by council tonight. We are interested, however, in any feedback council may want to give, particularly on the three options of what might happen at Scott Street. And again, that being grade separation at Scott Street with a pet and bike crossing, but no vehicles, grade separation at Scott Street with the cars able to go through, but, you know, probable impacts to the properties, or the possibility that Scott Street could simply remain an at-grade crossing. And so, there are several people from the project team here. There's, from AECOM, we've got Peter Di Stefano and Litzinger, and from Caltrain, Daniel Kraus and Lori Lowe. And just open up for you to discuss and have any question, answer any questions you may have.
Just on the August 16th meeting, I attended that, and I think what I did get from those that were in attendance was the underpass. If it were B for pedestrian, that that was a concern. It was a concern because at night, not knowing what's going on, the safety element, people utilizing it for sleeping or other things. That's something that did come up. I think also what came up is that word "affected." I brought it up there, and I'll bring it up here. Affected, I think, needs to be defined what that means, and I think once the, some of the residents that were there understood what that meant, it was also a concern to them, because now, a grade sep might seem like a great idea, no pun intended, but there's a consequence. An affected means loss of home. That's what it means, eminent domain. That's the reality. So, I think that was something that they were potentially, that that is a possibility, depending on what version, what plan, but I don't think that they were really there at that moment, understanding that. There was a map that was provided, so it was very clear, and you did a good job explaining that. Thank you, you did. But I think that was also something that maybe is not known on a bigger scale. So, that was just some of my feedback that I received from the residents there on the 16th. Other direction, comments, questions from council? Michael?
Go ahead.
Michael, then Laura?
Thank you. So, when we met individually before to discuss this, I suggested that maybe we look at the traffic patterns. I just wanted to understand a little bit better about exactly how many cars are going across there on a daily basis, and I'm wondering if there's still a plan to do that. And the other thing I thought about was how, if we do close the street, how it might impact response time for public safety if we have to go around to get to certain areas. So, I think those two pieces of data would be really important. When I saw this before and then looking at it now, and I still think that the best alternative is to just close it to cars, it's definitely the most, most efficient way to do it. As the mayor stated, I can't see, I mean, definitely, safety is number one, but if there's a choice between having that safety by taking away people's homes or by taking away traffic, I think the, it's a pretty easy decision, but I do want to know what that potential impact could be.
So, I'll start by at least partially addressing your question about the emergency vehicles. We have reached out to the police and the fire. I did receive a response from, from fire saying that they did not think this, closing Scott Street would impact their response time to the area very much. Seems they mostly try to avoid actually using that crossing because of the potential that they could be delayed by a passing train, so they tend to use the grade separation at San Bruno to get, you know, if they need to get to the other side of the tracks for that area.
Okay.
I'm not sure about the police, but I think the chief, no? Okay, well, so maybe we don't have information about that just yet. As far as the traffic information, so we have some data from previous studies that tell- tell us how many cars, you know, cross. And AECOM did produce sort of a high-level traffic study for that. Their conclusion was that there would be some, obviously, there's going to be some diversion of traffic, some of that would end up at the, you know, at the San Bruno Avenue intersections that, on either side of the Caltrain crossing there. And if, I'm trying to remember now, the conclusion was essentially there would be a slight effect on the intersection, possibly to the point, during the peak hours, they operate at LOSC and would possibly degrade to D. But their overall conclusion was that, you know, it wasn't going to be a significant My personal warning about that is it was a very high-level analysis, and I would personally still prefer that we get some additional analysis, especially related to what the queuing at the intersection will look like. There's not a lot of storage under the train station there where the road goes under the tracks. And we do have some issues with queuing already as it is, and it would be a concern of mine if we, you know, put more cars through there. But at the moment, there are no plans to do any additional traffic analysis as part of this planning, the team's work. I see that, I don't know if Peter or Millet wants to add anything with respect to that?
You walked all the way over there. You've got to talk now.
Yeah, I was dying, couldn't you see me? No, I brought some information with me. Hi, I'm Millet Litzinger, and I'm the project manager for AECOM. And currently, right now, it is true, we haven't done a detailed traffic analysis, and that's not currently part of our scope, and trying to keep within the budget that the funding required, that was one of the things that kind of put, got put on the side for that. But we did, there was a lot of available traffic information from Caltrain's 2014 electrification project. So we looked at some of the volumes there and the level of service analysis that was part of that study. And just to give you a sense of volumes, probably Scott Street, the average daily traffic is probably roughly around a third of what it is at Linden or at San Bruno. And the available information in that report also showed that in 2020, which is kind of our existing condition right now, that the level of service at both Linden Avenue was a level of service A or B, and San Bruno was operating at a level of service C. So that does indicate that there is some capacity for if the traffic from Scott Street, which is roughly around somewhere between 1,500 and 1,700 cars, that's westbound and eastbound, or eastbound and westbound, that there is some capacity there that those intersections would, could take. And particularly, if you grade separate Linden Avenue as part of the project, there's, there would be additional capacity there, too. So there is some room. We would have to do detailed analysis to verify that and to make certain of that, but the indications are that it is a possibility.
Did you have anything to add? Okay. Yeah, please run.
You mentioned A, B, and C. Could you put that in terms that would be more pertinent to general quality of community per person?
Yeah, sorry. So the level of service is, and normally, we do that in delay seconds, so people understand that better, but we didn't have that information available. So A is free flow, and C is severe, I'm sorry, and F is severe congestion. So from an impact standpoint, everything that's a level of service of D or better is considered all right, okay.
Okay, thank you.
First of all, Michael Cato, great presentation. Thank you so much for that work. One of the other questions in follow-up to the meeting that I had, which I know Jovan was not in attendance, was is there, if we do close Scott Street and we leave that to just for pedestrian walk-through, is there a potential to open up an exit out onto Huntington? I know that neighborhood, you know, growing up in San Bruno and going into that area for a lot of different reasons, the old AT&T building back in the day, I had a groomer over there, I've got a mechanic over there. It's always kind of an awkward neighborhood to get to, but definitely concerned about the safety as well. And so that was sort of the thought process was, well, let's bring them in from Huntington into that neighborhood instead of now having to worry about either coming into San Bruno Avenue and going around. So that was a thought. It might even actually be an improvement to that neighborhood and actually get them out into kind of an area. And I would assume, too, that this project or the success of it is the joint connection with South City as well of San Bruno. So maybe there's, you know, exiting out onto Tanfran, which connects the, Tanfran to Huntington, maybe South City. I think that's kind of the property line between San Bruno, and so maybe we can work with them on joint measures and improving that intersection out there. That was a suggestion I had had. I was also concerned about the traffic study as well. And then clarification, so is it true to say that if Scott Street is closed to vehicles, would the designs for South Linden not affect properties in San Bruno? Or is that not necessarily a true statement? Maybe, I see some nodding.
Yeah, if you're looking at considering a pedestrian under or over crossing, then at Scott Street, all of those, the property impacts could, are very minimal, and they would be the same for whether you did one, two, three, or four from the Scott Street perspective. Obviously, they vary from, at the Linden Avenue.
But is there a potential that the grade separation at South Linden is, depending on whether it's going up or down, as it comes down into San Bruno, that it'll still will affect properties?
No, no.
Okay, all right. And then at the meeting, is it, maybe it's a clarification, was the, Mayor Medina, you were there, was it, why was it, was it not talked about leaving Scott Street open and talking about either, you know, was that not an option, or was that not discussed? It was more about, it sounded like it was more about closing Scott Street, and that was more of the concern?
Yes, so at the meeting, the attention was focused primarily on the four alternatives with Scott Street being closed to vehicle traffic. We did touch briefly on the issue of the property impacts and, you know, why we were presenting those things to them. We did not really aggressively solicit feedback regarding the opening or closing of Scott Street. I think part of that has to do with the fact that the task for the project development team is to develop alternatives for a grade separation. You know, but I do think that at future community meetings, we will make more of an effort to have that aspect of this project discussed.
And I think that's important because I don't want residents or property owners in San Bruno to think, well, wait, all of a sudden, I've been attending these meetings, and all of a sudden, now this, this hasn't even been discussed. So I think we need to be clear upfront. And then how are we reaching out to property owners in San Bruno to attend these community
So it was through mail-outs to the neighborhood in the vicinity. We mailed out to the entire fifth edition neighborhood as well as, you know, the commercial area that's to the east of the tracks in that immediate area. I will say that the, so for the second meeting, you know, some of the notices went out a bit late.
And is it safe to assume that it, the documentation that went out to the residents is, hey, you know, great separation, great idea, right? But does that, what does that really mean to them, right? I mean, you know, once we start talking about eminent domain or the potential of homes being affected by this, I think you're going to get more residents to show up. So I'm not sure how we eloquently include some sort of, you know, options out there, but, and I don't know the right way to do it, but I just, you know, what I hear from residents, and what they come to us and they say is, why didn't we know about this? Why are we now hearing about this when this has been, you know, a year or two in discussion that we need to get out in front of this and get the feedback so that we're not just having three or four residents show up to a meeting? Because this is, I think, if I lived in the area, I would be very concerned as well. So those are my comments, thank you.
Through the chair?
Irene.
I'd like to piggyback on what Laura was saying. I'm concerned, too, about how we're addressing the residents and how they're learning about these meetings. So my understanding is the next one is in November for San Bruno?
Well, we haven't set a date yet. Earliest, it'll be in late, middle to late November. We're actually thinking probably more like early December right now.
Okay, so when you do set the date, I'd like, I want to make a couple of suggestions. One, don't put it close to Christmas vacation for the kids, because a lot of people leave, or Thanksgiving vacation. Two, when you advertise it, Nextdoor is a very powerful media now, and I think that should be added as, besides just mailing things out, I know when a lot of people get things from the city, unless it's a bill or a, oh my God notice, you know, they just don't pay much attention to it. So I think as, whatever social media you can use would be a good thing. I think this presentation you did was excellent, except that when you say affected, as the mayor and Laura both noted, it doesn't, people don't know that that means you may lose your house. So I think you may need to find some diplomatic way of saying that and maybe putting this as a link, at the presentation, as a link on our own city website, because we'd have a thing about construction or, you know, proposed developments or whatever. So I think this might stir up a little more interest for your next meeting. Also, do you know where the next meeting might be? I mean, having it in South San Francisco for San Bruno people, I know you did a joint one, so you had both, but when you do the San Bruno one, maybe there's someplace close to the neighborhood that you could do a San Bruno meeting. Maybe there's even a place in Tanfran that, which is very close by, that you could do. So, and also, the other thing is, do you only put everything in English?
No, the first notices were done both in English and Spanish.
Okay, great. And the last thing, and I'd be happy to get some people to volunteer, door hanging notices for that kind of thing for the meeting, like the meeting is this, you know, next week, next week, please come, might be something else to think about. So those are my only comments, thank you.
Thanks, Irene. Marty?
Well, I probably don't have anything to say because everybody's made such great comments and great presentation. That's what I had down here on the outreach, and it's not even said. Nextdoor Facebook, a YouTube presentation of what you did in English and Spanish would be helpful. Four community members isn't enough. The scale from the pictures, trains are pretty big, and just that drawing wasn't to scale. So about how high would that pedestrian ramp be?
Yeah, and we had, at the community meeting, those are what we called our cartoons, but also at the meeting, we had boards that showed all four of those alternatives laid out in Plan View as well as with typical sections. So if, for a ped going over, you need a 10-foot of vertical clearance, plus there's about a five-foot of a structural depth there, so you're looking at, like, the railroad would be about 15 feet up in the air.
Ped going over?
Ped going, ped going under. Ped going under.
Right.
But when you, when you flip it, and then the rail, the ped has to go over the tracks, the clearance is significantly greater because you have not only the tracks, but you have the electrification poles, and you need the clearance to that and the structural depth.
Right. So from what I understood, there were some good things about the pedestrian bridge. It's not a, we've had some bad experiences with our cars going underneath the tracks, and it gets flooded a couple times, so that would eliminate that. And the concern of safety in a tunnel, and I'll say it, would probably be full of homeless people at a certain point when it rains. It's just a safe place, you know, for people to stay out of the elements. So with those things said, and then the noise, if the tracks stay lower than, and pedestrians go above, I think that probably would minimize the noise and the amount of train traffic that we're going to be having in the future. So I also just wanted to echo what Michael said, the traffic impacts, you know, I think, I think a project of this scale needs to have a detailed analysis on the impacts to our residents as they're maneuvering around this. We are planning to have significant development in our downtown, so future impacts should also be kind of melded together of what, how that's going to impact traffic, and then we're going to be putting our downtown, and we need, how that potential is going to be, not just the current existing traffic. I also am in favor of exploring an additional access point to that neighborhood in getting to Huntington. It seems like this would be an opportune time to look at it. And I just want to make sure I understood, so impacted, is that pretty much eminent domain? Is that what this means?
Yes, that is a good clarification. So it's not that you would just lose your home, but there would be compensation.
No, of course.
Through the eminent domain process.
Right, and yeah, the ways we can minimize eminent domain, avoid it as much as we could.
Yeah, generally, they use the term eminent domain when you can't come to an agreement to the, with the owner.
Okay.
And if you go into the right-of-way acquisition process and you, you know, you come to an equitable agreement for both sides, then that process continues. It's only really when you trigger eminent domain is when you have a party that won't agree.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
Yeah, those are my comments, so thank you.
And we also have a speaker?
Robert Rico, Seventh Avenue. I don't live close, and I think between the mayor and I, we were two of the four, and since I'm not really going to be impacted, I think the city has really got to reach out and get the San Bruno residents that are going to be impacted there at the meeting so that they can understand this. I was very ashamed that only three or four of us showed up, so you've got to, got to do something to, as Irene says, maybe door hangers or whatever, or put the presentation on two or three places online or on YouTube or whatever, and get that out to where people can see what it may mean. Thank you.
Michael?
Thank you. Regarding the improved gate system that you mentioned, sort of in passing, are there examples out there in other cities of where enhanced gate systems have been implemented and have made a difference to the safety of the crossings?
I think I'd rather let Caltrain or AECOM answer that if they know.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Daniel Kraus with Caltrain. There is an improvement, I think they call them quad gates, so that's one technology that it physically blocks most pedestrians unless they really make a big effort to get into the right-of-way. So there are things you can do. I think like the high-speed rail projects, looking at a lot of those for some of their grade crossings that would remain, you know, for that, but, so I don't know if there's any other questions related to that.
No, just wondering, yeah, I was just curious, you know, if some of these other alternatives don't pan out, I was just wondering how successful leaving it, leaving it open at grade, if there was really some real benefit that could be gained by using a better gate?
I mean, the main issue you're going to face is Caltrain's planning quite a bit of an increase in service. We're working on a business plan right now, we're going to see, you know, we're working on a service plan that could increase trains up to 10 trains an hour or more than that potentially, so, and when in combination with high-speed rail trains. So the more, you know, if you have a crossing that remains, the more, the more trains that are running, it's, it means more delay for cars and just that much more risk for pedestrians.
Okay, thank you.
Question to staff, notices, were they sent out to owners of the properties or to the residents that live in the tenants, or the both, or how, who is notified and how? I mean, we know how it was sent out, but I mean, who is getting the notice?
They were mailed to the, to the address, the street address of the property. So whoever, I guess, whoever's living there was, would be the person who received it.
Okay, sure.
No, so I just want to thank council for their comments on enhancing our outreach to the community. So message definitely received, and we will certainly do that for the meeting that occurs later in this calendar year and utilize all methods that we can to really get out the word, get the word out. word, get the word out.
Any additional comments, council? If not, before we move on to the next item, first of all, thank you both for the presentation. Jimmy, would you do us the honor of introducing?
Sure, we have one new member in our engineering team that's here tonight. Her name is Haywon Ritchie. She's the new city engineer, came from the city of Samatéu. She joined us about early September, so maybe about five or six weeks and she's still coming back here, so I think it's a good thing. And yeah, definitely, you know, she brings a wealth of experience here and then this is, we're happy to have her here in our city.
So welcome very much and I know she was already at the Traffic and Safety Committee meeting on Wednesday and I stopped by the office on Friday and when I was at City Hall and so, welcome.
Thank you very much. I really enjoyed my time so far.
Sorry, we didn't give instructions on that.
Thank you for that welcome and I just wanted to say that I've, in the little over a month that I've been here, I've really enjoyed my time, the staff has been great and they're very focused on their work and doing the best for the agency and its citizens and it shows and I'm happy to be a part of the team.
Thank you, we're glad to have you.
Thank you.
And thank you for being here this evening. Thank you, Jimmy.